All right, I see we are in. It's 2:04 June 12th, 2019. This is a workshop. We were called to order. Let's do the pledge.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone. Thank you for taking your time out to be here today. And we have any changes or amendments to the agenda? Not here, Mr. Chair.
So I make a motion that we approve the agenda as written?
Second. Any further comments? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously without a mic.
All righty.
Congratulations.
All right, we're gonna move on to number three, which is Curry County Educational Leadership Workshop. And as Liaison Commissioner Gold, you have the floor.
Okay, I just wanna thank all of you for coming. I've gone out and met with all of the superintendents and the dean of SWAC, and I found some really great things that are going on. And we're putting this workshop together to share some of these ideas and maybe come up with some ideas that would help us work better together so that all of the students in the county have the same opportunities. So with that, let's start with introductions. We'll go around the table. We've got...
I'm Kristin Nierott, and I'm the principal of Port Orford Langley School District.
And she's pretty amazing. Port Orford District is amazing. And...
Tim Wilson, Superintendent Central Curry School District.
You're amazing, too.
Lots of good things there.
Doug Bun, Southwestern Oregon Community College Executive Dean.
Okay. And thank you so much for coming. Where's Patty? She should be up at the table. Come on up. Well, you should be part of the team up here.
See the sweat already starting to form on her brow?
We're not here to make people sweat, believe me.
No, we're actually very excited 'cause this is our first workshop ever with all of the educators. So it's a great opportunity.
Pretty neat.
Mike? You at the table, Mike?
Patty Scott, President of Southwestern. Patty Scott, President, Southwestern Oregon Community College.
Okay, and I do know that Sean Gallagher had a meeting down in Brookings with the school board. So I wasn't sure whether he was gonna make it. It doesn't look like he made it. So unfortunately, he didn't make it. So first of all, I'd kind of like to have each of you talk about your successes. And then maybe as a group, we'll talk about, well, how can we get all of the districts to have some of those successes? So Krista, do you wanna start with yours? And I gotta say, you blew me away with some of your math scores and so forth. Just amazing.
Thank you. Well, we are, Port Orford Langley School District is actually number two in the state of Oregon for children who live in poverty. And regardless of that, I think we do great things. We have a CTE program of manufacturing. We have some very, some of the highest test scores for both ELA and math. And I'm proud to say that for this year, our juniors, 100% of them, got a Level III or above on the SBAK ELA test, which is above the state average. Well, it is, yeah. And we were 70% passing for our math for 11th grade. We're seeing some really good scores come out of there. But I think we have a great staff. We work really hard to recruit really great people, great programs. We are recipients of an Oregon Community Foundation's after-school program grant, $180,000 over three years. So we're trying to get some after-school programming going, which we have. We actually, about two weeks ago, they did the farm-to-school dinner, which we had a cooking class for our junior high students throughout the year. And they made all the food at this farm-to-school dinner. So we were great with that.
So was it good?
I got to be the taste tester throughout the year. It was amazing. You know, we really work hard to get outside. We know that with the high level of poverty that we have in our district that we have to also help provide opportunities. So we do a lot of different things for our students. You know, getting them opportunities to bring stuff in for them, getting them out to do things. Like I said, we have a great staff. And it's really the staff push that has really helped us to have the high level of success. You know, and everybody loves to look at test scores. And we talk a lot about achievements great, but we talk more about growth of our students. And you know, our vision is that we're one team, one goal, no limits. So whatever our students need, we work really hard to achieve. Our kids are always in the forefront. And I really do think that that's very evident when you come up to where we're at. You know, we've had some athletic success. We have a, we've won three state championships on our boys' side the past couple of years. And I think that really helps, not only athletically, but scholastically. It helps bring our culture. And we're a huge school culture. I, my vice principal and I truly believe you can't teach them anything if they don't wanna be there. And so we really work on our school culture and really wanna make it a place that our kids wanna be at. And like I said, you know, we have some of the, I think we have the greatest staff. I'm biased. I think we have the greatest staff in our district on the South Coast. So we do, I, we do our best. We do what we can, what we have. And we work really well with our community to bring in opportunities, so.
And I guess my big thought after talking to you was that we don't have the excuse of poverty anymore. Look at what you're doing in your district with the highest level of poverty in the state. We can no longer use that as an excuse.
No, and I agree. And we try not to. And the big thing, you know, my big philosophy, and I know it goes with Mr. Perkins, our superintendent, Mr. Steller, our vice principal, is that we really work to try to have a place that the kids want to be and the staff wants to be, not that they have to be. And so we really work to break down those barriers, that there's no reason why you can't be at school. And we really are trying to build in a way to reach out to the community, to really build those bridges, to understand where the needs are, and really work to break down those barriers. And I agree. That's never been, you know, we, yes, we're at, I believe, in the 2017 census, said that we were at 46% of our students, ages five through 18, live below the poverty line. That's 40, well, for, in 2015, we were actually ranked eighth in the nation for childhood poverty. It's dropped a little. So now I believe we're in like the 40s to 50s. But it's not an excuse. You can reach, you know, we wanna, we wanna provide our kids opportunities. And often you hear, you have to go somewhere bigger to get opportunities. And we look at them often and say, no. Opportunities are where you're at. It's who, how you take them and how you approach it is when you get to have those opportunities. So we really work to try to provide our students and their families and our staff the ability to really be ready to take those opportunities, so.
Thank you.
Love it. Thank you. Tim, you're on.
Yes, well, I thank you again for the opportunity to share with you again today. So our district now is, just finished up last Friday, another successful year. And success can be measured in a lot of ways. I haven't, don't have the exact numbers on our recent assessment scores, but they usually have been in language arts in the 80th to 90th percentile. In math, it's been at least 50% the last few years. As I evaluate this year, I think the highlights I'd like to bring up is we are a work in progress in a couple of different ways. As Kristin said, the part of the success of any school is providing a culture of learning that is positive. And we've had some bumps on that. And working through those, I believe that I have some community support and a school board who wants to have their best for our students. And so that is the basis of the beginning of success is establishing relationships to establish a positive culture for learning and a purpose to be there. I'd like to kind of keep my comments around the relationship with the college, if I may, in the sense that we see our relationship with Southwest Western Community College to be a solid partner and one that we continue to want to increase offerings. Currently, our students can earn dual enrollment in honors English, math analysis, and receive a health care, allied healthcare career certificate. And this year, we added manufacturing. And so it's very likely that a student could leave Gold Beach High School and have over 20 college credits in preparing them for the next steps of making choices, whether that is going to Southwestern or any other opportunities. As we look forward, I was just sharing with Krista yesterday, we hired our ninth new teacher of the fall, of, for the spring, for the fall.
So you have a lot of turnover?
We had a lot of turnover. A lot of that, about half of those are retirees. But we see this as an opportunity to build upon some of the progress we're making, but also bringing in new people, new ideas from across the country, from Michigan, Iowa, Washington, Oregon, California, that chose to come to the South Coast and live and work. And we are committed to their professional growth and utilizing that opportunity to, like I said, to move forward with some of the initiatives that we're making.
Great. Now, I'm gonna ask both of you kind of a question here. I know STEM and CTE programs are really important. Boy, you're just in time, Sean.
Nice tie.
Oh, thank you.
Do we have any extra agendas for Sean? I have one. Okay, perfect. Okay, so I was gonna talk about a question, CTE and STEM programs. I know in Brookings School District, we have a 96% graduation rate in those programs. And so to me, those are very, very important because the graduation rate in just, in general, is a lot lower than that. So how are your programs for STEM and CTE?
Yes, so I'll speak for the high school first. Right now, the, those programs are underdeveloped. As we hired a new science teacher, that is a commitment that we've made. One of our former science rooms during the retrofit is being changed into a specific science technology lab. And so we'll begin to at least start that process. Our eighth grade computer teacher at the elementary school, again, gives the kids a good foundation. Right now, we don't have the pathway for them to continue. However, we are initiating in the fall a new digital arts pathway that will begin to, at least, not on the engineering side, but certainly on the creative arts side, move towards that direction.
And one of the reasons I'm kind of asking this question is because I know some of the districts are further ahead in these areas. And I'm just wondering if there's some way the districts could connect and make those classes available to everybody in the county somehow. I don't know, through long-distance learning or what, but...
Well, I think long-distance learning is a harder one. So I'll tell, we have a CTE program for manufacturing. It'll be the third teacher in three years that we've had. CTE is actually a really hard thing to hire for because I can go out and be a contractor and make much more money than I can as a teacher. You know, we, at both the high school and the elementary, we're working on becoming pretty close to one-on-one with Chromebooks. So we're trying to add in some coding into classes. And we work with local partners to do science, you know, science activities and math activities and different things like that. But I think it's really hard to pinpoint, say, an exact program because of the smallness of our school. You know, the teachers do multiple different things. Right, so.
I just had a question also. You talked briefly a minute ago about the connection between the school and college credits. Who, how do you approach that? And who does the instruction on those?
Sure. So they are currently at Gold Beach High School. Those are our own instructors. But they have gone through a sponsor process or have been acknowledged by the college to be duly certified to teach the dual enrollment.
But they're done here in Gold Beach?
Yes, they're our, that's correct. There are regular, regular, there are regular staff that have master's degrees in their subject areas and/or have received, gone through a certification process by the college to say that they qualify. If you, as, I wouldn't go as far as saying it's an adjunct role, but they have a similar role. And we're aligning our curriculums. The Writing 121 at Gold Beach High School is the same as, in theory, as it should be at the college. And with Pacific, their relationship with OIT, similar type of thing, so.
So is that offered at all three schools?
We don't, yeah.
Individually? Are they all done here centrally? Or does each school do their own college credits at their own school?
We do. At Pacific, we actually offer 45 college credits, but we use ours through Oregon Institute of Technology. It was because of limitations that SWAC has, we were able to get our instructors certified through Oregon Institute of Technology. So we do writing classes, speech classes, math classes, and science classes. So it's about 45 credits that we're able to offer.
Okay, we need to give Sean a chance to talk about the high...
Can I just address that for a minute? The reason, the community college requirements for teaching are more stringent than the universities. The four-year universities in terms of requirements for masters or certain graduate-level credits in the discipline versus at the universe, the four-year universities do not have that.
That's interesting. Sean, can you kind of give us a highlight of what's happening in Brookings Harbor High School and...
Beautiful sunny day.
I know. I hope your air conditioning's working.
You know, as you know, Sue, we've been working hard on our graduation rates. I appreciate you mentioning the 96.7% grad rate.
I missed the .7, sorry.
That's okay. For our CTE students, and that was last year's class. I'm anxious to see how this year's class does. And, but we won't have that data until the fall.
Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, sorry. So we won't have that data until the fall in terms of official graduation rates. And so we have been investing our Measure $98 quite heavily into our career technical education programs. We've brought back welding. We've enhanced our construction program. We have a plethora of, you know, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, STEM or STEAM, I guess you'd call it, type courses, art, ceramics, digital imaging. We have certifications in digital graphics that students can get a certification and go right out in the workforce. And so it's more of a workforce development angle. And that's been in place at Brookings for many years. And...
Don't forget robotics.
Robotics, yes, robotics, robotics. We did quite well this year. And we're very proud of our students. And so I might also add that we're currently working on hopefully an MOU with SWAC to share our CTE facility with them, to bring some more community ed to the community and maybe educate, you know, secondary students during the day and community members in the evenings or in the weekends or during summer months. I think the idea of partnering in any way we can, especially in remote regions, is gonna be, I think, a very important element. One suggestion I might make is, when I was superintendent of Lake County School District, because we were so remote, we were 90 miles away from Clamath Community College, that we, I was able to apply for and get approved for an Oregon Solutions project that was governor-endorsed. I was one of the co-conveners of the project. It was called Innovation and Learning Center. And what we did with that particular program is we installed high-speed video processing equipment. At the time, it was state-of-the-art. I think it's more common now. But we made both Lakeview a teaching station as well as, of course, Clamath. And so a student could be sitting in Lakeview taking the same class along with other students in Clamath Falls. Or you could be teaching in Lakeview. And right before I left there, we were able to secure enough grant funding to actually expand that program throughout Lake County. And so now they have a network of Clamath and then Lakeview and then Paisley and then Northlake. And so you could have, you could have multiple students. Maybe you pick up two or three students here, five students there. Next thing you know, you've got a whole class. And, you know, we talk about remote education. It's gonna be more difficult for tactile-type CTE programming, like a welding course. Remotely, that'd be awful difficult to teach. But when you start talking about STEM-type courses, engineering, you know, mathematics, technology, those sorts of things, I think there could be a lot of work that could be done there. And then, you know, fold in the workforce development factor, too. I think that's also a very important aspect.
So tell us a little bit about your college credit classes.
Well, we've been working hard to establish strong relationships and continue to grow those relationships. SWAC is our number-one target, I guess you could say. We really, really appreciate our relationship with them. But we do offer college credits through SWAC, OIT, Southern Oregon University, Oregon State University. I think, I think there might be some Western Oregon University. But sometimes, you know, when you have different instructors with different qualifications and different programming, you kind of have to go where it fits. And so it, sometimes, it's not always the same institution. And I do know that by state statute, that, you know, community colleges have a little more difficult challenge in terms of instructor approval. And we try and work through that, but sometimes you're not always able to hire a teacher with that, that subject-level master's degree, per se.
It's tough to get real-quality teachers and retain those teachers.
And retain those teachers, yes.
I think that's a problem in all the districts around here.
Yeah, that's an element we continue to struggle with.
Can I ask a question, Commissioner?
Sure.
I just have a question on the teacher retention. What part does housing claim there? Is that...
Huge.
Okay.
I would say we've been really monitoring closely our retention rate in the four years I've been there. And I would say number one, the number-one reason for staff moving on is retirement, or has been. I think it's kind of starting to wane a little bit as you retire more out and you hire younger staff in. But the number-two reason is it's kind of a toss-up between housing and family. I think sometimes people move to the area and they go, oh, it's how many hours to the nearest airport? Or, you know, it's just that extra, that extra jaunt. And it suddenly becomes a realization for them. Occasionally, you get medical as being a factor. You know, maybe a family member gets ill or needs special medical attention. Sometimes I've seen families move away that their child needs special services that our rural area does not have. But you can, you know, attain those services in Eugene or Portland or places like that. You know, occasionally you have, you know, some evaluation-type people that move on, you know, 'cause they're just not being very successful there. And, but I would say most commonly, it's gonna be your, your housing and the rural, remote area, unless you have some strong family connections in the region.
Okay, I think we've talked to all of the high schools. Now we get to talk to SWAC. So Dr. Bun.
Well, thank you, Commissioners, for having us here. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Boyce for being on our advisory council. Appreciate his input there. To highlight a few of the things that we're really excited about, it's been a challenging year in some ways throughout the state with chasing funding and things that President Scott might want to talk about. But on the Curry campus, we've really had a great year. It started out, I think, about this time a year ago, our CNA cohort started. We had just six students in the CNA cohort last year. Some of those were young people from this community, from the high schools. So it's really wonderful to see somebody that's going to be a senior next year, takes the CNA courses over the summer, certifies, and then can work as, in the field. And we had several students that did that from our community, from the Brookings as well with the high school, providing some funding and support there. So it was really great. That course was taught by Judy Dornbach. And she has now been hired as a full-time nursing instructor. So we're excited to have that faculty member that is working full-time out of the Curry campus and to see the leadership and the expertise that she brings. A couple of things that, other things that are really great is working with Gold Beach. They've got an excellent facility for welding and machine technology. And it's great to be able to put some things in place so that we have a certified instructor and move towards a certification program where the students can complete the program that's going on at the high school and then move right into an internship with Freeman Marine. And if you go over there, it's very impressive. So it's great that students have that track that's really pushing them in the direction of employability. You probably know that during this year, the college has been working very hard in the health field. So during the year, we've been able to receive approval for a spring Registered Nursing Program cohort. And that, that got going with the spring, the spring term. And we've also received approval to have, to basically double the cohort of students on the Curry campus in the nursing program. We had been having five students every other year. We've now been approved to have five students. Did I say that right? Five every other year. We're gonna have five every year. So we've doubled our capacity. We're really, really excited about that because it helps in, in so many broad ways. We see this as a tide that's gonna lift all our boats. And the amount of excitement has really been growing. Those students that now would have to apply to the program every other year, there's twice as many slots. So we're seeing more students that are anxious to get into the general education, the preregulate courses that are necessary to get into the nursing program. We have a, we're going to have the nursing, the CNA program again this year. As we had seven students last year, we have 13 applicants for the program. It'll be starting on the 24th. So we're very excited to have, have that growth. We're seeing it. With the CNA program, those students, many of them, are gonna stay right here in our community and work with the facilities, either the Gold Beach Hospital or with the...
Center Coast?
Yeah, well, great Good Samaritans we had.
Oh, okay.
Of the, the people that were in the class last summer, four of them took jobs with Good Samaritan and either in a full-time or part-time capacity. So we're very excited about the, what's going on with our health programs. We, as Sean mentioned, we're working together to put together a memorandum of understanding that would allow us to teach welding courses and other courses there at the high school using the facilities that are there. We don't have to have redundant facilities. We don't have to have redundant facilities. We just don't have, we couldn't if we tried. But we're hoping to expand into that by working with the facilities that they have, augmenting some of the things that they can't do, having qualified faculty members or instructors. So, we're excited about the possibility of getting that moving forward and then expanding that into some of the other areas. So, using that facility, as Sean said, at night and over the weekends. So, we were also hoping, we've talked about Gold Beach, that if we get that memorandum kind of pounded out, that then we can talk with the Gold Beach School District and see if we can't utilize what is a really, really nice facility there as well to start teaching and offering classes. I would make sure that you're aware that we do have support coming from the Coos Bay campus to support, provide student support. So, we have a Veterans Affairs Coordinator that comes down once a month. We have Counseling and Disability Support Services that come down. And we have Jamie Belzer, who is with the University Studies Center. And she comes down to help with advising and transfers. So, we're trying to support all the students in this area to give them the, what they need to either work towards a job-ready solution in their lives, or to transfer to another college in the state or outside, to increase their opportunities. Last Friday, we had our student convocation, and we gave out to dudes, or as a result of wonderful donors, we had $20,000 worth of scholarships that were awarded to students in the, from Curry County. And that was a great evening. We just thought that was terrific. It's support that allows students to go to school that just otherwise wouldn't be able to do so. So, we appreciate the support and are very excited that that money allows us to continue to provide education. We are using broadcast technology, specifically Skype, in order to provide tutoring services. So, students that attend, we've got them set up. We can have them in with a peer tutor, as well as talking to their faculty, and...
Is that utilized a lot, this peer tutor?
We always wish it would be used more, but there are the students that will come in. We've had a couple of people that were regulars, and we love it when that can happen. We've got a room, and when I walk by every week and I see, there's one lady I see there every week. So, we're very excited to provide that service. We are also partnering to provide the education program. Thank the newspaper for covering this. We've got the Southern Oregon University's education program. We actually have classes that are taught. And over the broadcast system, we can have students that actually attend that eight o'clock class that come in and join us Monday and Wednesday for that class when it's been held.
Okay.
We're very excited about some of the things that are happening and the direction we're going.
Okay, so I guess the next thing is, how can we work together? Maybe some suggestions from all of you so that we might be able to help students be more college or career-ready? And you've kind of touched on a lot of this, but...
From my standpoint, I think the more that we come together, the county commissioners, our communities, our districts, and maybe look at some joint grant applications, look at some workforce development initiatives, I think there might be some opportunities there that we could all benefit from. And I think it really just kind of behooves us to kind of say, "Okay, what's the lowest-hanging fruit?" And maybe go after that and try to just kind of work up the tree.
So, I guess, kind of relate, okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna share, you know, we feel that our advanced math teacher that we just hired yesterday, if that person hadn't been hired, we probably would've been contacting Mr. Gallagher and say, "Okay, what period, what third period at Brookings High School?" Because we need to, we need to start Skyping classes even within the county. I mean, that's how fortunate we feel to have an instructor, but we also know that that's gonna continue to be a challenge for us, all three districts on the coaches, to get those highly-qualified, highly-specialized staff. So, we do need, I think, to improve our inner-county ways how we can broadcast.
See, and once you have that highly-qualified teacher, if you could share them via Skype or something like that, that would be amazing because it's hard. Like up in Port Orford, you've got three kids in a class or something like that. And to me, it's a waste of talent. So, that would be great if we could do that, yes.
Do all three schools have the technology to be able to share teachers that way?
I think we're getting that way. We're all in different stages with the South Coast ESD of changing our technology services. I think everyone is ramping up because of a lot of the dependence on one-to-one or two-to-one devices, that we're all going out and getting our own fiber. So, I believe that the possibility is there to create that network within the county.
We're ready.
We are, too.
So, if you could work together on something, if you have these great instructors, just utilize them.
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, they're rare.
And with the college as well, I would say.
I taught for a long time, and it's rare to have really good, super-instructors. So, great. We've got a presentation by Youth Pathway Partnerships, and we're looking for a way to maybe get them together with you and do something with that. So, do you guys want to come up? I don't know how or where you're, you are of this program. I know Steve, or Tim, you came and watched their presentation.
Right, right. And I know that there's also another program from Coos Bay that's in process, if I'm not mistaken, of a similar design with the Workforce Oregon.
You need to have that on.
I was really impressed. They did a presentation for the commissioners and getting kids out into the workplace. It's not all about going to college, because I think it's, needs to be going both ways. We need to get the kids out prepared to do something when they leave school. So, you're on, young man.
Thank you. So, Gene Merrill, the Program Director for Youth Pathways, actually the College and Career Coordinator at Illinois Valley High School also. And our program really started at that little tiny high school, which, you know, similar to, I think in size, about similar to Gold Beach. You know, one of the, if you look at the IRS data, it's one of the poorest towns or poorest communities in the state of Oregon. Four of the six poorest communities feed into that school in particular. And so, my background is actually in business. I was one of those kids that thought I wanted to go off into natural resources or something because of growing up where I did. Realized that getting through the schooling and education and then having just random jobs here and there wasn't something that was conducive to somebody who wanted to stay living in the same community where my family was the rest of my life. So, I went off into the business world and, you know, worked pretty much with 17- to 25-year-olds through that. Lots of college students, as the Assistant General Manager of the Oregon Caves National Monument, we have, had a large number of college students who would come in every year as seasonal workers. My own business is in retail, you know, generally low-wage jobs. And so, those were always, right out of high school, high school youth. And so, there's always a common theme, and that was that youth really, they felt unprepared for life. And, you know, you guys working in high schools really see that, you know, especially the kids that come back, kind of going, "Wow, you know, we didn't realize that this is what it was going to be like." Employers see that very frequently. They hire a crop of candidates and, you know, you hire 10, and eight of them are gonna move on relatively rapidly. You're gonna get a couple that do pretty good. Usually, out of those couple, they're off to creating their own businesses or something pretty frequently, which is great. But it leaves you behind that eight-ball of constantly trying to bring in new people. So, when I started working in education three years ago, my focus wasn't just, "How do we get every one of these kids into college and how do we better their lives that way?" But we really focused on where their, where's their trajectory? What are they looking for? What do they believe that they can do? And so, we created a youth internship program, which, after about a year of research and working with the Higher Education Coordinating Commission, Oregon BOLI, Oregon Department of Education, we realized was a completely different animal than anybody who's really engaged. And, you know, there's a lot of issues with youth. You're under 18, so there's all the hazardous work restrictions, which we see in, you know, many of the local industries. Kids can't go to work in carpentry and construction. They can't go to work in boat docks and things like that. So, what I found out is, when I went to ODE and said, "Hey, this is what we want to do," they said, "Oh, well, you gotta talk to BOLI." When I talked to BOLI, they said, "Oh, well, you actually need to go talk to ODE. That's education." And nobody was really communicating. So, as we really delved into it, we found out that it is possible to do these kinds of things, put together a high-quality, educationally-aligned program that allows students to access the real world of work. And there are just bypasses around some of those labor restrictions. So, we started a program that gets students out into the work world. They're on construction sites doing real-world work. They can work in a welding shop or metal-fabricating shop, provided that it's through the educational system and it's for credit. And as the presentation I did with the commissioners a couple months ago, you know, we outlined some of those issues. You know, it's a real common thing now. I think a lot of the Workforce Investment Boards and other groups, Chambers of Commerce, there's a large one going over in the Bend area, they're really trying to address this, but it's business saying, "Hey, schools, we put together this program, and you guys can access it." And so, the approach that we took over in Josephine County wasn't, "Here's a program. You guys should join us." It was, "Let's design a program together." And I think just through personal experience and my experience now, working in education, you really have to have that when you're talking about a youth program. You have to have business and education working together, creating the program so that it's solid, and it also creates a lot more buy-in. And so, that's what we've kind of talked with a little bit in the presentation with commissioners, talked with Krista a couple of times. You know, we have a model that we're opening up now in Josephine County. It went from one little school to a couple of kids from a couple of the other schools kind of joining in and saying, "Oh, yeah, this is working." Josephine County joined together. We created Youth Pathways as an organization, as a nonprofit organization, with a Board of Directors comprised of municipal leadership, business leadership, and also our school district representatives. And we're rolling it out now as a countywide model. And so, our goal this year will be 200 students within our four county high schools doing internships within the community. But the ultimate goal, and when you take a look at workforce development, the ultimate goal has to be, how is this available on a large scale? That's the only way you can really impact workforce. And so, our goal is, within three years, every student who goes through high school, their junior or senior year will have that experience of being out in the community. And so, like I said, it needs to be educationally-aligned. They have to actually get something out of it, and that plays to state and federal regulations around internships as well. And so, you know, we're working on the fine-tuning what we have, developing that out. You know, as you guys see with three different school districts and a community college, different processes, there's different personalities in place. It's a little interesting sometimes to get everybody working together. But we found that by bringing, you know, "Hey, we have this one mission." It's not, "Do we take this subset of kids and we make things great for them, and, well, we couldn't quite reach everybody else." But how do we reach every one of those kids where they're at, whatever they believe in? You know, I have students who, one of our students, she did an internship at a physical therapy office, and she went in there, she's a 4.2 student. She went in thinking, "Oh, I'm gonna be a physical therapy assistant." For her, that was like a stretch, like, "Maybe I could have a steady job." And after working there for about three months, the physical therapist pulled me aside, and he said, "This girl needs to be a physical therapist." He says, "We've already, we have her running patients through their routines, and she's phenomenal." And so, she's now going off to OIT this fall. You know, a short-term program, she wouldn't have had those kinds of experiences. And so, whether it's construction and, you know, a kid actually being out on a job site, running a nail gun, and doing cement work, and all those kinds of things, or, you know, a more white-collar job like the medical professions, if you have something that's designed by the entirety of the community, you know, municipal leadership with their input on, "This is what we see that our region needs." The schools, "This is how it can work for our communities." The colleges, dual-credit and things like that are vital. I think one of our biggest goals as we grow our program is that more of the students, as they go into these internships, it's articulating into some sort of a degree program or certificate program that is kind of building hope. Working with low-income youth and growing up in the community that I did in Cave Junction, it's not about the ability of the youth, it's about the belief in their ability. And so, if we can show those kids a step at a time, "Here's a pathway," and that's why we called the organization Youth Pathways, because it's showing them, "Here's just that one more step." You see it in education all the time, working with math, you know, "This is, this is what you need to do." And the kid goes, "I can't do that. I don't understand." But if you do one step at a time, it makes sense, and they start, you know, following. And then, pretty soon, you have, you know, amazing math scores like you guys do. And so, rather than doing, you know, an hour-long presentation, which is, I think, what my last one was, or something, we were invited over to kind of be, you know, maybe part of this conversation. It's very much in a state of, would it make sense? Because we have a big job rolling this out in Josephine County. But would it make sense that Josephine County and Curry County work together? We're very similar in a lot of ways. You know, we graduate a few more students than you guys over there every year. But when you look at the economic activities of the area, when you look at the outcomes, the personal incomes in the families, we're very, very much similar. And we're also similar in that we're, our regions are kind of pulled away from the main economic drivers. And so, we kind of get left behind in a lot of ways. And so, when we step up and we say, "No, that's not okay. We're gonna take control. We're gonna do something ourselves." We can actually make some differences without waiting for the larger urban areas to kind of hand us down some scraps.
Thank you.
So, I guess the big question is, are you folks interested in being part of this?
I think I want to take it back to my board and my admin team for discussion, but yes, I would say...
I think what we found, as we developed this out, is it probably what has made the most sense was actually doing presentations to the individual school boards, finding out at the school boards, and, you know, obviously, the superintendents and the district leadership directors are interested. There were some details, you know, work out as far as credits for internships. So, each individual school district actually organizes a local control state, and so each school district has their own ability to determine how credits are going to be issued within that big bucket of the 24 credits for graduation. I know Krista said they actually require more credits than the state average, the state mandated for graduation. You know, so there are definitely some details there that would make sense to start working. The nice thing about working together as a group is, you know, we started looking as a low-income region. I mean, with this entire southwest corner of Oregon, that's very attractive to grant organizations. And so, that's one, you know, big plus in our corner, is that working together as a regional strategy, we can really get some attention from the state and from other organizations that are providing funding for things like this.
I hear all the time comments from industry and employers in the Brookings region at least, in terms of their wanting students to be able to come out of high school and be ready to employ them.
Ready for another job.
You know, whether it's automotive skills, or it's, we've got so many different areas that need some addressing. And I'm even interested in, we talked about the shortage of finding good teachers, of really fully, even more so, fully exploring growing our own teachers.
Yeah.
You know, and I think just the other day, we hired our sixth Grow Your Own teacher in our district.
That's awesome.
Very proud of that. But there, we need to step it up.
Students that do that, intern with, yeah.
That need is there.
Yeah, we have, we have high school students who are interning in kindergarten. This semester, I had kindergarten, fourth grade, and fifth grade. They're interested in elementary education, and they go in there, they get half a school year. What it's like? What is it like working on lessons plan? You know, what is it like dealing with kids in that age bracket? And then, if they go to college for it, they know that they want to do it. They have that belief that that's available. It's not, "You finish college, you go into your year of student teaching, and go, "Ooh, wait a second. What am I gonna do with this degree now?"
Amen to that.
If you work in education, that's a, you know, that's a very common outcome.
So, let's look at next steps. I would say the next step would be to, if the districts are interested, have a presentation, maybe done by pathways, to your board and staff that need to be there? So, would all of you be interested in...
We could do it individually, or we could do it regionally. Do something with the ESD and the college.
Might be a good time for consolidation.
I'm gonna need to be excused. I have scheduling issues, but that's the most distinguished group I've ever sat before. So, I took a picture. I'll send you all the copy. It makes me wish, when I was growing up, I would've spent more time in the library. Thank you. My apologies.
It's okay.
Really appreciate you coming together. I'll send you all the photo, okay?
Okay, so Gene, you're gonna be giving everybody a card and...
Yeah, I can provide contact information, and we can schedule. It's June, most school districts, everybody's gone in July. So, you know, we're probably looking at August, when we could actually get in front of the school boards.
Okay.
But we could definitely begin that process. And I mean, we're already in communication with Julie and Summer, you know, inviting us here and everything, so we can figure out, you know, what the next steps as far as the county. And we're willing to work with however far you guys want to go.
Just to let you know, I'm just kind of here to try to facilitate things, and the nuts and bolts, basically, are up to you guys.
Yeah, it's really each individual school district, because they are kind of autonomous entities.
Commissioner, can I just add something onto that? So, just so the schools know, too, that Gene's team, they're here, Josh, who used to be with Workforce Develop, or Worksource Oregon, I should say, and then Daniella, Daniella Bivins, who's very connected to the education system. Daniella is actually writing a grant so that, on our behalf, so that if the schools are interested, we can offer that to them.
Oh, that's...
Bravo.
That's great.
You guys want to stand up and maybe take a bow or something?
So, Joshua, we actually headhunted him. His background is in workforce development. He most recently worked for Worksource Rogue Valley. He's experienced with their youth services team and business services team, which was very attractive. He's the Youth Pathways Business Liaison for Josephine County. So, his job is really the binding thread between business and education. He's out there making those connections. Daniella Bivins is actually on our Board of Directors as our treasurer, but she is also our Higher Education Liaison. She works for Tillamook Bay Community College, worked for Southern Oregon Educational Service District, and then had a long history with Rogue Community College with their academic partnerships. So, has extensive, extensive background in large grant-writing, project management, and things like that. So, we have a very capable, not only Board of Directors... So we have a very capable, not only Board of Directors, but the on-the-ground team as well, are extremely capable folks.
And Summer from the county, Summer, do you want to stand up? Summer is working with Gene and his team to try and secure the funding so that we can offer it if the schools are interested.
So you think there's a big possibility you might be interested, if there's some funding available?
So, so the big thing really is, and again, this is the challenge that we saw as we were developing, and as I was developing the program over in Josephine County, is I was developing the program, I was the program, because I was the one who was going out and making those connections within the business community, organizing everything with the schools. And that was, that was a pretty common thing. As I talked to business people, they said, oh yeah, you know, I had a friend who was the welding teacher at such-and-such high school, and we had a great partnership where I would have kids come and do some projects for me after hours, and then he moved on to a different school, which is common, and then it just fell apart. And so you see that time and time again. And so really, in order to make these, these kinds of programs successful and successful long-term, you have to have an organization in charge or a way to pass down that institutional knowledge. And so the funding essentially is so that we can get a business liaison for the county or a couple, part-time, however it makes sense. You know, there's a bit of a stretch here when you go from community to community. And so having the folks that would partner with education, you know, they would be hired by Youth Pathways, it would be part of our organization partnering with you guys, we'd develop a board over here who would be in charge of kind of directing the work over in this county. And so that would be the primary portion of the funding. Some of the things that we're working on doing, you know, like promotional materials, I'm not great with Photoshop and stuff. We had a group who actually did our logo and everything, and so that was just like a little mock-up of a poster that would go in like your school's career center or counseling window for students. But one of the things that we're working on in Josephine County is, imagine a business, you know, let's say they have four or five different career clusters represented, like a healthcare facility would have healthcare, maybe dental, IT, human resources. So if they had, you know, a window sticker and said, you know, hey, you know, these are the types of jobs that are represented within our facility, and the youth who's going to work, and I just use red in my son's internship badge, is wearing a lanyard and a name tag that says, you know, this is what they do, this is where they do it, and oh, it's red, that combines with red here, and then the college says, hey, these career pathways are in healthcare, we're going to use red for that. The kid's now stair stepping, oh, I know what the color red means, that's my future. And so, you know, developing things like that as a team, obviously it's more cost-effective if we do it as a larger group. So, yeah, we're not talking huge amounts of funding.
One of the things that's going on in the state of Oregon is guided pathways movement. All the 17 colleges are working on that, and the goal is starting just that all the way through, either to work or on to a four-year school, so that fits in, what you're doing fits in perfectly.
We actually got guided pathways, guided pathways that you picked, and that's how we cluster our career areas together, so that a student would know here in high school they can easily transition right into school.
Okay, just so everybody knows, you can't talk unless you're at a microphone, so anyway.
Okay, so we're going to kind of wind this up. Our next steps would be to have you meet with these folks.
Yep.
Pass your cards out, and then possibly, so we can get together as districts, have continuing roundtable discussions. And I wouldn't mind facilitating those if you're interested, that would be great, so.
I think there could be a lot of enemies with that.
Okay, how about the rest of it, you feel that would be good?
We've actually started conversations about doing more things within the county for professional development, so this kind of fits in that same realm.
Okay, so I'm going to open this up for a few questions now, or comments. Do the commissioners have any comments?
Yeah, I have some things also. I just want to let you know before you guys leave, if you could, hopefully this meeting breaks before you have to leave.
Oh, we've got all the time you need.
I'd love to spend a few minutes in my office with you before you leave.
Sure.
So thanks. We had a couple of public comments, sir?
Yeah, just a question.
Right up to the microphone, thank you.
You have to identify yourself too.
I will gladly identify myself. So my name's Rusty White, I'm a career navigator, I work with the Southwest Oregon Workforce Investment Board. I also am a librarian at the Curry Public Library. Over the last two years, we've done a ton of work with the schools and also with community organizations and government organizations to do very similar things. In fact, Dr. Bunn talked about the welding program at Gold Beach High School. I actually, that was something that I helped set up with Freeman Marine and the school. And I guess my question is, we have a Workforce Investment Board for Curry County, why are we looking to Josephine County to provide services that the Workforce Investment Board here has already been working on? And, you know, are we at the point yet where, you know, I don't know that, that's not, I mean, I'm not, I work for the Workforce Board, I'm not like a representative of them. I guess my question is, why are we not working through our local organization that is already set up to work in Curry County instead of going to Josephine County?
You know what, this is the first time I've been aware that we had that in this county.
That you have a Workforce Investment Board?
I know, I do know that we do, and I think right now what we're looking at is alternatives as well, anything we can do to further the education in this county. I would hope we will all come to work together as one group to make education in the county a better place.
Right, and I absolutely agree to that. I guess I'm just, it just seems weird that, and I'm sorry that you didn't know about it, you said that you did, Court notes about it intimately because he is part of our advisory board and comes to all of our meetings.
Ah, okay.
And so I guess my question was, when all of this was happening, it was never, I don't know, I just, it's curious that we are representatives, we represent Curry County, and that wasn't included in any of this.
I would probably say that you maybe contact Court on that, and perhaps we can coordinate with you a meeting so that we can discuss.
Yeah, that's fine. Absolutely.
Not only that, leave me your card so I can?
Okay, I don't have a card on me, but I'll bring you one.
Okay, perfect.
But, but I've had meetings with especially Tim and Sean, and we basically have talked about all of this that we're talking about right now, over the last couple of years, and so it's just surprising to me.
Okay, I'd love to sit down and have a talk with you, that'd be great.
Julie?
Yeah, just a comment, so Summer does work with the Workforce Investment Board. Gene's program takes it a little bit, I think a little step further. For example, a Josephine County example I can give was when, if they need transportation to the job, Gene's team was arranging to help them get the transportation. So it just takes it a little step further, and I think there's a place for both, to be honest with you.
We provide transportation as well.
Yeah, so I mean, there's clearly a need to help the kids, and I think that if both groups can be partnering together on it, that'd be great. There are different niches there. Summer has been working with both groups, so she is aware of the functions and how they coordinate, or how they could coordinate.
You might find, so, I don't want anybody to turn, where do you go, okay. Because it maybe seemed like, oh, wait a second, like, what are you, trying to shove the Workforce Boards off in the distance here or something?
No, 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 and I'm, it's not like, I'm not trying to be combative.
Can't talk unless you're in front of a microphone.
So, so Youth Pathways is an organization that is a partnership of the schools, working with municipal agencies and business and industry. So the Workforce Investment Boards do have a very important part, but nobody really knows what youth needs like the educational institutions. When you look at the legalities behind doing internships, especially with youth in hazardous work environments, those literally legally have to come through educational institutions. So the Workforce Investment Boards actually don't have the ability to do that, because you're not educational institutions. And so we have to have the schools as part of that package.
And we've been working with the schools. That's like the whole thing with Freeman and the SWAC and the internships, that's all through the schools.
Okay.
So we're in the same boat, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the educational groups have to have a seat at the table rather than in a program being developed, which is pretty much what's happened in other areas around the state, where here's a program, we're going to offer it to you guys if you want to use it. What we did is, as an association of schools, we came together and said, we're going to develop a program, and we're going to bring business and industry in partnership with that. So the Workforce Investment Boards and what we're doing really, they meet two different needs. We meet the under 18, the high school age group, the Workforce Investment Boards really meet the out-of-school, 16 to 24-year-olds for your youth, where they're maybe in GED programs or not in school whatsoever. So they're really two separate groupings.
Can I make a comment?
You got it, Krista.
Well, I'm kind of disheartened, because nobody's mentioned the North County. You know, one of the things that I look forward to is perhaps building partnerships that we can find internships in Port Orford. And there's a lot of talk about, you know, working in Brookings and Gold Beach, but what about the Port Orford kids? And so that's kind of where I'm looking at, I'm listening, because it isn't feasible for our kids to do internships in Gold Beach or Brookings every day.
Oh, absolutely not.
And so that's where the piece is, is because I'm hearing a lot, and I mean, no disrespect to Tim or Sean, but I hear a lot of, here's happening in Gold Beach and here's happening in Brookings. What's happening to the Port Orford Langley's kids? And that's where I'm, I'm thinking about how this could fit into our district. Because we've had workforce people come in, you know, business, and it seems like it kind of just stops. And so I, you know, I want to see what we can do, because they come in and they say, well, Port Orford doesn't have anything, so we just can't help you. I've had that happen numerous times.
Whoa.
And so, you know, whatever support, whatever partnerships that can work for us, like I said, it's not feasible for my, my students to be missing a half a day, and most of it's travel, to go to an internship. And so, you know, and I appreciate everybody's comments, but what about my Port Orford Langley's kids? And that's where I think we really need to work together as groups, as internships, because there's not a lot of industry up north, not as much as, you know, Brookings or Gold Beach. We don't have access to the college as much. And so, you know, building that partnership, I think, is great, but we haven't extended past this city. You know, and that sometimes is very disheartening to me.
So Gene, do you think it would be possible to include Port Orford?
So when we, when we first met Krista, we actually met up at the ESD in Coos Bay. So driving from Coos Bay back to where I'm at in Cave Junction's three hours, almost on the dot.
Gotcha.
I drove it every day for six years when I owned businesses over there. Josh and I decided we were actually going to go the other way and take a little bit longer so we could specifically go through Port Orford. Because generally I go through a couple of times a year, we're just, you know, we're passing through, we grab some lunch or something, and then the rest of the way. And I think we identified potentially about 30 different internship jobs that we just brainstorming as we're driving through. You have numerous with federal partnership and state parks, the police department there, there are numerous different types, you know, from IT to, you know, different services that they provide, water treatment, wastewater treatment, you know, there are numerous, those kinds of things that are a lot of times very well-paid careers, that students have no clue they exist, and they're right there in the community. And then when you start looking at business partnerships, there's potential, you know, many other potentials there. So I would say, you know, if a kid wants to be an OB-GYN, he's probably not going to be able to do that, you know, in Port Orford. It's the same with Cave Junction. I had a young lady who asked me this morning, she said, well, you know, I want to be a baby doctor. I was like, so an OB-GYN? It's like, yeah, okay. So I said?
But there's stepping stones to that.
This is, this is what you're going to have to do, you're going to be doing something general medical in our area, and then if you want to pursue that further, you're going to be able to get some advice from those people on what your next steps are. And I think that's the most powerful thing, doing it the way that we're doing it where it's long-term, you're building that mentorship relationship, you know, those students are with a business person, a doctor, whoever it is for 18 weeks of that full school semester, and really build some relationships there. And so you have a mentoring piece that doesn't happen in short-term programs, which is, I would say, probably the most needed thing in most of our rural low-income youth.
So there's hope, Krista.
Well, yeah, yeah, and I just, you know, I keep hearing, and like I said, I just want to, we're the North County, we're the North County. We don't get a lot. And so I want to make sure that, you know, if we are partnering, that we are included and we're remembered.
Our intention when, when we first started looking into the program was county-wide. Definitely.
So when we met at ESD, maybe in April, right, late March, early April, and the first thing that Port Orford School District shared was that they were concerned for the buy-in from the businesses, they weren't sure that their participation would go both ways. Also, what we identified was the lack of transportation. So those were two barriers that we identified, we knew we would have to address right away. Of the three school districts, I think we identified the greatest need was up in North County, so there's no question about that. So we came back, and I shared with Commissioner Gold, we've got this transportation issue up north, we don't want to leave any kid behind, what can we do? So Commissioner Gold secured three buses.
Possible. It's not secured yet.
And we're super excited about that, because we know that we have at least one means of transportation per school district. Then last month, we held a listening session in Port Orford, 35 citizens and business owners showed up at 7:30 in the morning, and we said, what do you need? And they said, we need kids to be interested in jobs. And so right there was meeting another need of the concern of the school district, that the businesses really, you know, would they be engaged or not? So we did get a buy-in on them from that, from that listening session, three different task forces or committees were created. One of them was communication, one of the issues that the citizens of Port Orford shared was that they have a lack of communication, especially with the generation gaps. And so last, a week or so ago, I submitted a grant for Port Orford specifically, I think I shared this with you Rusty, for $10,000 a year for four years, to provide the students of Port Orford the opportunity to design and sustain the framework for communication throughout their community. I feel that that serves needs of the community on many different levels, including the internship program that we're looking at. So, yeah, I just, I've got to say, those questions are being heard, and we're working to get them addressed, and the more we know, the more we can, you know, overcome.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other comments from commissioners, questions?
Well, I just, I want to talk a little bit more about, about the SWAC College and some of the things that you offer down there. I have, as a county commissioner, I try to look out for everyone in the county, and dollars well spent. So I've kind of been doing some looking through of the classes that you're offering and some of the things that, that it seems like the campus has lost over the years. I looked through some of the old county spring, you know, the class schedules, those kind of things, and I, I see, put my glasses on here, you know, this one here is from 2011, and I see several pages of classes in the beginning of this book from, for Curry County. And then of course, it's a flipover, and when we look at the amount of classes in Coos County, there is substantially more. I want to say there's probably two or three times as many classes. This is in 2011. And I'm just looking now that I received this a short time ago, for the current classes that are being held. And my concern is this, this is what's being held for spring classes at the campus in Curry County. And if we flip it over, the amount of classes that are being held in Coos County are substantially more. I guess my concern is this, is I have, as you know, being in public office, my phone rings, and I have phone calls, and I know Mr. Bunn, you've been kind enough to come to my office and speak to me, issues about dollars well spent in our county for our constituents and our taxpayers, and I am probably one of the, I would like to say, one of the loudest voices in the county for education. I'd love to see our kids get the best education that they can, whether it be in a classroom or vocationally. When I grew up, as some of you in this room may have, we had vocational schools in many of our high schools. I remember my brother buying a car out of a junkyard, and he drove it for seven years after he came out of vocational school with it, because they completely redid this, redid this car. Our schools basically get roughly 60% of the general fund of this county through the tax, or, I'm sorry, the tax base of this county. What concerns me is the amount of effort that seems to be, and I'm, this is what seems to be moving to Curry. what seems to be moving to Coos County and leaving Curry, and I'm wondering if we can address that somehow or begin to address it at this meeting. It just seemed like the thrust of everything that is moving forward for the education on the SWAC campuses is moving to the North County and, or in, in Coos County and, and what's being handled down here is, is being minimalized. And I'm just wondering if you can help me to address some of the phone calls and concerns that I have on that.
I would just say there's absolutely no truth to that whatsoever. 93% of our entire enrollment is in Coos County. So 7% is down here, enrollment isn't growing because the population isn't growing. The enrollment from Curry County is coming from these three school districts in our dual enrollment base. And the majority of what the citizens in Curry want are community education classes. And the way the state funds community ed has changed. So at one point, we had pages and pages and we could offer anything we wanted and we could get funding reimbursement on a community ed class. At one point, they said, no, it's got to be towards career and technical or towards transfer or be somehow workforce-related. So that changed radically what we were able to offer here. And if anything, we're doing more here now that we haven't been able to do, we've never been able to do nursing. We could do more than 10 students every year in nursing if we could work out the issue with students being able to go from Oregon into California to do clinicals, which I've brought that up before, we're trying to work on that through our federal, our federal folks in Washington DC need to work with the California folks to get that resolved. It's not anything we can just do, we've tried. And, and for the record, that means a student, one of our nursing students at our school in Oregon cannot go across the border to do a clinical in California, but the minute they pass their test, Sutter Creek or whatever the, Curry, the hospital in Crescent City will hire them. So the fact that they can't go across the border to train makes no sense to me, but that limits how many nursing students that we can take here. We have faculty, more faculty here than we've had over the years. We have one of our faculty members here in Curry that, when she doesn't have enough enrollment, she pipes in and teaches students in Curry or in Coos Bay. And the same happened with Coos Bay people here. And one of the big things that has changed is distance education. We have more courses available by distance and those in that class schedule unfortunately are listed on the Coos Bay side and they're not listed on the Curry side, which we are going to be rectifying.
Okay, but would you, would you agree that your faculty is, is greatly decreased in the last couple of years down here?
I don't think so. We have more full-time faculty, we just hired a full-time nursing faculty, we have a full-time writing faculty, our, our digital design program that's for the entire campus, he's housed here in Curry and teaches to anyone who is enrolled wherever they're enrolled at.
Okay, so you're doing math.
And part-timers come and go.
Right. I guess, I guess my biggest question is that our taxpayers, again, basically 60% of, of the tax fund from the drive from this county goes to education. Curry County and our general fund receives 1.2, 1.82 million dollars. The entire general fund of Curry County to pay all of this county's bills receives 1.8 million dollars to pay our bills. SWAC alone receives 2.13 million dollars. So I'm guessing, I guess my point is, you know, we're trying to partner with schools and, and, and do the best that we can for our kids, but the amount of classes that I see personally being taught down at the college versus the amount of revenue dollars from the general fund that are, or from the tax base of the county that are being used for the college, it just seems, from everything I'm seeing is, it, it just seems like everything's trying to move to the north, to, to Coos County and not staying here for the taxpayers in this county. And I hope you can appreciate that I'm, I'm getting many phone calls about this.
Appreciate that you asked that question, but that's absolutely not true. As Doug mentioned, the folks from Coos Bay come down to Curry to serve the students, whereas Curry couldn't afford to have a veterans coordinator here, they couldn't afford to have a counselor, a disability services person, all of instruction, all of financial aid is done, all of admissions. The majority of the services are done and have always been done in Coos Bay for, to support the Curry campus.
Okay.
Krista, what I would say is that, you know, I'm very optimistic in that we've had some, some hard work has been done in terms of the health program. It's a, it's a, it's probably the number one or number two need in the county as far as if, if it's housing, healthcare, and given the demographics, it's a real need area. So we're really proud that we can offer and we can tar, we can start to expand. Having a nurse, nursing faculty full-time is, is a big bonus for us as well. And I'm optimistic because I see, I see momentum growing here. What has, what will ultimately determine how many classes we can offer is enrollment. And as we build the enrollment in the nursing area, it's going to bring up other general ed areas, chemistry enrollments are going to increase, our human anatomy and physiology enrollments are going to increase, our sociology, anthropology, communication, those classes are going to see higher enrollments, which will allow us to offer more classes that, and we're going to use some of the onesies and twosies by using technology to try to pick up some enrollments in outlying areas. So I'm, I'm really just optimistic that we're headed in a direction that will cause us to expand and to be able to serve the county better.
I just, I guess for me, because I'm not, I guess I'm technically challenged, I don't see kids sitting in front of a computer screen while they're, got their Game Boy in their hand, watching a class in Coos Bay when I, I guess the physical part of it for me where you've got an instructor in front of you actually teaching you, as opposed to sitting in front of a computer screen with three friends around you and you're all goofing off while you're, you're getting that credit.
And I think that that can be used in two different directions. Marta Wozniak taught a writing course in the winter term and it was taught on the Curry campus and it had enrollment in Coos Bay. So some of our classes that are lower enrollment, we're hoping that we can offer in at times when there may not be an instructor available in Coos Bay to try and augment our enrollments as well.
Okay. Well, I know Curry County's always been known for years, years past, for the education system that we have here and the pride of it. I mean, when I first moved here, I heard from people that Curry County had the greatest educators there were here. So, I, I'm cautiously optimistic that, that things are moving forward with that. Is there any other comments from anyone in the, in the audience would like to say anything else?
Well, I really, oh, someone's here.
Connie?
I'm Connie Hunter and I live in South Curry County and thanks for having this important event. There are a couple issues that I'm concerned about. Having workforce investment not understood by Sue Gold is of concern to me because she worked with Alex Campbell and Alex Campbell used to be over workforce development for the whole state, so that concerns me. Also, what concerns me is 38.8% of the actual revenue that goes into our college tax district is from Curry County. I don't see 38.8% of the services here. When you have your veterans service officer come here once a month, that's not, not a third of anything, that, you know, we, we don't have that service parity comparable, comparable to the revenues that are collected here. And I want to talk about something with regards to what I learned from dealing with one of the biggest, ugliest organizations in the country who's improving a lot and that's the VA. And the VA had to focus on student experience. And what I am shocked about is the student experience that comes out, that, the difference between what the student experience is at Coos Campus versus here, we don't have those kinds of things. And I was told that we didn't want to make Curry Campus into an activity center, it should be a hub of activity, in my opinion. And as a taxpayer, digging into things like when Southern Oregon has their teaching program, the student goes over there, comes back, well, the gas and the so forth. So you, a student, there are hidden charges in those, those expenses to students and it's very hard for students who do, go to Southern Oregon for a, a program on the weekends and they're usually trying to hold their jobs on weekends. So a lot of these other programs are not really addressing the curriculum at Curry Campus. We don't have enough representation on our district board with the new at-large situation. We'll be lucky to have any representation. So to me, it feels more like taxation without representation and I talked to Dr. Bun as a taxpayer and as a consumer and I didn't get very good answers and I'm not feeling the answers here today either. And I know this is a hard thing for me to step out in front, to be a lightning rod or to criticize the college because my husband's employed there and let's disclose that. But the integrity of who I am and the belief in my community and what we need to do for our students is my primary concern. And I also want to see Curry County citizens get some bang for their buck, their taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just, I, I do want to, I was remiss to bring up, I do want, do want to bring up the, the board. I know it's, it's been changed to an at-large board and...
It's always been an out-large board, always.
Okay. Well, I, I guess, I'd like to, I'd like to learn more and I know this may not be the meeting place to do that right now, but I would like to learn more about the board, where they're from in the county, because I do feel like we need to have seats on that board and, and have a voice.
You do have one and there's always been one from Curry.
Right, but how many board members are there?
There's seven.
So six from Coos County and one from Curry. And we put, we give, we give 2.2 million dollars and Coos County gives 2.8 million?
Yeah.
So they give, they, we give almost what they give and we've got one seat. So can you, again, I'm not trying to be the salt in the wound here.
It's all about who runs, there are open positions and it's, it's been difficult over the years to just get one person to run from Curry.
There may be a different county now than there was a few years ago because I hear, I hear all the time people want to run for, for the seats and there are a couple coming up this year?
There was another election in 2021.
Okay. And how about the curriculum on the schools? I mean, I, I understand everyone's board does their own curriculums, is that correct? So, yeah. And here, is, so that's, your curriculum is done through the board of directors as well, on, for SWAC?
It has to go through state approval.
Okay.
Through the HEC, Higher Education Coordinated Commission.
Sean, you brought something up before that I was wondering if we could just briefly touch on before we wrap up. And did you talk about Regional Solutions had done a grant for you when you were over by Plamath?
It was an Organ Solutions project.
Organ Solutions. I think that's something we should really try here.
It, it worked very well because it suddenly opened up resources to me statewide that I did not have access to prior to that.
Would you make yourself available to help us better understand those options?
Of course.
And I think that's something that we could work on as we move forward.
Okay, great.
And I would also like to, before we wrap up, maybe schedule a meeting with, with your board, is that possible? I'll come to you, is that possible?
We, we would love to have you come to the July board meeting.
Sure.
It will be on the Curry campus, is it the?
July 15th.
July 15th?
Okay, I would love to be there. Could you plan on me being there and I, can we meet with the board? Or is it just going to be in an open meeting setting?
It's an open meeting session.
Okay. All right, then I'll plan on that and I'd appreciate it.
It's 1:00 PM.
Probably. That's on the 15th or 14th?
15th. You said 15th, right?
Whatever, Monday.
Okay, it's a Monday.
At 1:00 PM?
After the 8th.
It's the 8th?
We'll make sure that you get a, an invitation.
Monday after the 8th, and then the 8th is Monday, so then 14th or 15th.
Okay.
Well, I really appreciate all of you coming today. I think we got some really good ideas and I think this is just a beginning of collaboration and getting together and I know Jean is going to be giving contact information so that you can get presentations to your board on pathways and maybe work together with, with the existing entity here in Curry County. And thank you again for coming and I'll be informing you of a next time we can get together and collaborate.
And I too would like to thank everyone for coming today. Appreciate your time and, and your concerns. This meeting is adjourned.